Hello, everyone. It's now 5:30. I'm going to wait a few minutes and then we'll begin this work session this afternoon. Just want to say welcome to those of you that are joining the work session. We don't yet have a quorum of the Board of Education, so we're just going to wait a few more minutes until folks join the call. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. We are just going to wait a few more moments. We do, I see Jody joined us. Thank you and hello, Jody. I see Sylvia with us. I don't yet see any other board members, so we're just going to wait a moment so that we have a quorum.
It's nice to see all these faces on the screen.
It is. Nice to see everyone. I know that a few board members are trying right now to enter the call, so. I'm just going to wait a moment. I see that we do have a quorum. Jeremy Arnon just joined, so I'm just going to wait one more minute. Here we go. Hello, Jeremy Gallant. Hello, and welcome to everyone. Today is Monday, March 15, 2021, and this is a Board of Education work session to discuss the reopening of our schools. We'll not be reviewing any business items, nor having any period of public comment as this is a work session and not a Board of Education regular meeting. The Board of Education has not voted, nor are we voting today on the operations of our schools. The reopening plan submitted by the superintendent to the state in July 2020 for this school year was reviewed by the board, but it was created by the superintendent with the collaboration of the reentry planning committee. Based on the regional direction for school reopening, new building level reentry planning committees convened on the 4th and the 10th of this month that included interested stakeholders from across the community to prepare for a reopening of our district's schools on April 12. At board meetings and in this work session today, the board is listening to the superintendent's recommendations for reopening and can provide guidance as a governing body. The superintendent and the administrators have the decision rights in this work session, and the board will weigh in, ask questions, and be consulted in this work session. Today, we are here to listen to each of the administrators of Hillside, Farragut Middle School, and Hastings High School provide a summary of the plans to reopen on April 12. After we have heard the summaries from each building-level team, board members can ask questions or raise any concerns or comments. So we'll hold all the questions or concerns or comments until each of the buildings have have shared their information with us. I'll now let Dr. Henning Pedman introduce the summaries of the recommendations and the concerns and solutions for the school's reopening.
Thank you, Ms. Berman. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank all the administrators and our board trustees who are present, and obviously, anyone from the community who is also participating in this session, which Ms. Berman introduced as a board work session. So there were 14 areas that the building teams, the building reopening teams reviewed. So we did not look at the entire plan that was submitted in July, where we looked at the components of the plans that spoke specifically to the schools. So the 14 areas that the building reopening committees were tasked to look at include the configuration of classrooms and other learning environments, effective use of barriers, personal protective equipment, ventilation and air exchange, outdoor learning, fresh air and masks breaks, remote instruction, surveillance testing, daily COVID health questionnaire, hygiene, cleaning, and disinfection protocols, use of the cafeteria, ingress and egress areas in the school, bus transportation and drop-offs, musical performances, theatrical performances, athletics, and extracurricular activities. The teams met to include parents and family members as well as faculty and staff members, so different meetings were convened to make sure that they were going to be, that our faculty and staff were able to participate directly after school at the end of the school day. So all of what the building reopening teams actually collected in the way of feedback represents recommendations, concerns, and some solutions. So I want to thank them again for doing all the work of preparing. And after this particular work session, the building teams will, the administrative teams will prepare a pre-recorded presentation that will be available at 3:00 PM on March 25, and it will basically include any recommendations or changes in any of these 14 areas that are represented, and I just reviewed. There will also be a slide deck that will be prepared that will, you know, that will come from not only the conversations here, but also the final, those final decisions that I'll work with the administrators on preparing so that we have, you know, a record, a print record as well of some of the things that are going to change or remain the same. So again, thank you so much for being here and participating in this, and for everyone, all of our family members and all of our faculty and staff who participated. I want to thank you as well for giving your time to help us to prepare, to get everything ready for April 12, school reentry or reopening for all of our students. So I'd like to start with Hastings High School and followed by Farragut Middle School and then followed by Hillside Elementary School. We also have Andrew Wendell here, who's our interim director of physical education, health, and athletics, as well as Laura Sullivan and Tessa Stewart, who are here to speak to any, any related issues associated with special education, as well as Joe Materano, Amore Karabalo, who can speak to any buildings and grounds, facilities-related questions, and obviously, Melissa Samansky, who can speak to any issues related to remote instruction or any other components that are really, that have come up or will be discussed. So I'll start with Lou and Melissa. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I do want to preface this conversation by saying that in no way is our plan complete yet. We're still working through some logistical areas, and there's still some things that we're still trying to figure out, quite frankly, based on some of the concerns that you'll hear this evening and some of the conversations that we've had. In addition to the two reentry committee meetings that we've had at the high school level, I can tell you, we've also had a building leadership team meeting focused around school reopening. We also had a faculty meeting, an entire faculty meeting dedicated to school reopening. This is all over the last 10 days. And we have another reopening internal committee. That's our own in-house internal reopening committee meeting this week as well to flush out some of the concerns that were raised in the bigger committee. So I think it's easier for us to go kind of tab by tab. I try to make it quick because I know we, we want to, we want to leave time for questions in the other two buildings. So we'll go, I'll, I'll just hit some points in each tab that came up as areas of concern on some ideas that we have as far as remediations or solutions or our thinking around the subject. And then, you know, we'll, we'll take questions at the end. So obviously, the one tab that we'll not discuss at the high school is busing. The high school has zero busing. We don't deal with buses. We have the advantage over the elementary school in that we don't have to worry about busing. So we won't be discussing any kind of buses, and we're not having any field trips between now and June. So busing is a non-issue at the high school level. So as far as the configuration of classrooms, I know Dr. Henning Pedman has told you that Joe Materano and his staff has have done yeoman's work and put all of the furniture back into classrooms. Our teachers were given prior notice, so they didn't walk into classrooms that, and had heart attacks. But they, they are now concerned with the amount of furniture that are in the classrooms. That came up in our reopening committee meeting. And basically, what we're talking about is, you know, we will make, we will make a concerted effort to send out in the three buildings, I think I'm going to do this together, we'll send out a survey to our parents. It's a quick survey, just so that parents can state their, their intentions, quite frankly, on April 12, so we know exactly how many students we'll have in the building, so we can, we can give that number to our teachers so they can plan accordingly. So our hope is that we send that out during our spring break, with the hope that we have April 6, we will have some hard numbers so that we can share with faculty, and I've already spoken to our department chairs to kind of do an analysis, and we have classrooms that are a little tight. We will look at other classrooms that may have smaller numbers and look at swapping classroom spaces based on numbers. You know, the days, we can't be thinking the English department has these rooms, the math department has these rooms, and so forth and so on. Real estate is real estate, and it is shared by all of us. So it's quite possible we may have a math class in what used to be a Spanish room, or we may have an English class in what is typically a social studies room. It's going to be simply based on numbers.
Lou, can I interrupt you for just a quick second?
Yes.
In the interest of time, could, could you kind of pull everything together in about 15 minutes? So if each team gets 15 minutes, it leaves more than enough time for the board to ask questions. They do have these sheets, so any, like, just the summary points that, you know, you think are really valuable to share, that would be great. Thank you.
Can you do me a favor? Because I have a way of talking a lot, so if you can keep me honest, I won't get, I won't feel slighted at all. So if you can give me.
It's going to be my world, Valerie. Welcome to my world.
Just, just give me some timers. Okay, so, so, so that's the classroom career. Barriers was our big discussion. This is really the big topic that the high school is dealing with right now. We have parents and students who feel we should have barriers. We have parents and students who feel we should not have barriers. We actually have a parent who, who sent us the research from, latest research from John Hopkins that talks about barriers inhibiting the airflow within our classrooms. So we're looking at, at the high school level to try to be as least restricted as possible. We're looking maybe at just the big barriers, but that's an ongoing conversation and probably the conversation that's going to take us through next week with a decision on what we're doing as far as desk sneeze guards or desk shields. We are definitely using the big portable ones in between our rows, but, you know, we have, we have some serious concerns at the high school, and I think the board knows this, the administrators know this, that the high school abandoned the sneeze guards very, very quickly in October for multiple reasons. Our students felt comfortable in the classrooms. Our teachers felt comfortable without them. They were a little obstructive to see the board, so that's a big area of concern when it comes to barriers. As far as PPE is concerned, most felt really comfortable. There was a suggestion that we, we sent to Valerie and to others, maybe the teachers can have N95 masks provided by the school district, and there was a question about whether we should mandate double masking. Ventilation and air exchange flow, we talked a little bit about that. I've kind of asked parents who had some significant questions to either reach out to Joe Materano or Maureen about ventilation, because I am a little confused when it comes to all of the numbers when it comes to ventilation. It's not my area of expertise, but my understanding is ventilation is not a problem. I, we believe the weather is going to cooperate so we can open windows, leave the doors open, and I think the proper ventilation will be no problem. Remote instruction, this was a concern from our faculty. What is remote instruction going to look like at the high school? Those of you who know our remote learning plan, our remote learning plan calls for just access only to the live stream. However, our teachers have really morphed into teaching to the students at home, and that was because we had a limited number of students in class and more students who were remote. Now that we shift and turn that the opposite way, teachers are concerned, and they're not sure if they'll be able to do both. So that's an ongoing conversation with our faculty. Lunch is another huge area of concern that we've heard from parents. Melissa, if you want to touch lunch?
Sure. Maureen and Joe have been gracious enough to order us some more furniture, and I'm working with Carlos on expanding our lunch locations, both in the building and outside of the building. So we're going to be adding tables all around campus, in and out, so that should be helpful. Also, up in the cafeteria, we have the seats marked off with appropriate social distancing, and we also have sign-in sheets for each of the tables for contact tracing. And we'll continue to work with the cafeteria on serving, you know, individually wrapped lunches. There won't be any buffet, and also, they're serving hot lunch, but they're doing it, the, the actual cafeteria workers are plating those so to limit the contact. So that should be helpful as well.
As far as performances and sports, I mean, I know Mr. Wendell is going to join us in a little bit. He had a conflict with home, but performances, everything is, is being videotaped. All of our rehearsals have been outside as far as the theatrical performances. Our band and orchestra, when the weather is nice, they also go outside. Otherwise, they are socially distanced in the auditorium. We don't see that changing. And they're working on the, the spring concert being a, a sort of compilation of recordings. But we're not anticipating anyone being in the building for live performances until the earliest next year. But, but clubs, clubs and things like that will be meeting. So extracurriculars, I'm leaving it really up to the teachers and the advisors who feel comfortable. But when the weather is nice, I anticipate those meetings for clubs and, and any kinds of organizations would happen outside socially distanced. I've already had some parents reach out and say, you know, even if my kid is remote, do you think they can come to a club meeting after school as long as it's outside? And that's absolutely, we'll be as flexible as we can possibly be. As far as entering the building and exiting the building, nothing has changed from our September reopening plan. Ninth and 10th graders should be coming through the front of the building in the high school main entrance. Our 11th and 12th graders, we're going to ask to come through the Cochran Gym entrance. Our faculty, those who arrive early can come through the main entrance. Those who arrive after 8:00 AM, we ask them to use the side door by the auditorium that Joe and Maureen were, put a key fob on, so that. that Joe and Maureen were, put a key fob on so that we limit the traffic as students are entering the building. But we don't see any changes in that. Bathroom, the bathrooms, we're going to limit one per, you know, one person to leave a room at a time. When we had a lot of students at the beginning of the year, this worked very, very well. I had a conversation with our students that, you know, we're going to try to keep no more than two individuals in a bathroom at any particular time. Obviously, that's excluding our single-use bathrooms. And we're going to try to use the honor system. It worked really, really well at the beginning of the year. When students see there were more than two people, they waited outside until someone walked out. We'll try that. We may have to tweak that a little bit. But we're going to try to limit the number of students in the big bathrooms at any particular point in time. Outdoor learning, I mean, this is our, this is our big push.
We've been working with the middle school. They've, we've developed a signup sheet for all of our staff to be able to sign up for different areas.
Yep, we, we did that with the middle school. Do you remember every space here is shared? So, you know, with a couple of days of nice weather we had last week, it was incredible how many teachers went outside during those, those two, two days. There is, there is right now a downside to going outside and that downside is internet access, right? The moment you kind of cross the streets over to the fields, we, we lose internet access and those students who are remote will have to be given some sort of, you know, asynchronous activity to do. So we're working on that. We're working with Maureen to see if we can get some fiber or anything up on, on those, on the Burke Estate. But that's not going to happen probably by April 12th.
Oh, you have five minutes.
Okay, I'm almost done. Mask breaks, those are mandatory. They've always been mandatory. I've asked teachers to go to different locations. Some of the locations in front of the high school, we ask them to go back by the Cochran Gym, the courtyard, school street. We don't want everyone in one central location, but there will be a mandatory mask break, at least one per period. That hasn't changed. There's really not much to talk about surveillance testing. We have a meeting as a, as a administrative team. I think it might be even Wednesday and Valerie can speak more to that. And the health screener is a non-negotiable is what I've told everyone. It just has to be done. There's no change in that.
We are, we are going though to ask, we'd like to keep the cohorts just in case the possibility of going back to hybrid. So we're going to revamp our little reminder to have students and parents sign in as their regular cohort. And I'll just run double reports. And we'd also ask, we'd like to appeal to the parents to commit to like a two to three week period if possible, because it's just so much easier for record keeping.
We're done.
Thank you so much, Lou and Melissa. We'll hold the questions if you don't mind, board trustees, until the end, after all three or other presentations are done, because there will be some common threads throughout. What I can interject now is a little information about the Bynett's Now Abbott Test. It is a surveillance test from the Governor's Micro Cluster Initiative. These are free tests to the school districts. So school districts have ordered these. We actually got our, received our first batch. We have about 640 of them. The plan is to, together when we meet, we're going to talk about the logistics of, you know, can we manage 5% of testing all, each of the schools each week? Or would it, would it need to be a little higher or, or is 10% something that's reasonable? So we have a plan that we actually created when we thought we were going to eventually be in a yellow zone. So we'll use that footprint to be able to work through some of the logistics in terms of the, you know, the parent permission form that we originally used. We may need to upgrade that as well as, you know, when the testing occurs. In the initial plan, it was before school or after school. So we'll be looking at that as well as just the logistics of making sure that we have a system for not testing the same group of children every week. So that's sort of the broad strokes of that. It is not a requirement. School districts, most of them do have as part of their mitigation strategy, surveillance testing. It's not meant to be, you know, it's a rapid test. It's not meant to be one where, you know, we pick up, you know, you know, the students who are, are, you know, negative. We're interested in those students who are positive and asymptomatic. So we'll go, we'll have more information about that after we meet this week. So thank you. Farragut, Jennifer and Kevin, thank you again, Lou and Melissa.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So we have a lot of commonalities with Lou and Melissa from the high school, just to share. And I'm just going to start my timer, keep me on task. That we, we had our two community meetings and I'll call them our community reentry reopening meetings with some participations from teachers. So thank you so much for everyone's time there. And we had a faculty meeting as well where we discussed our reopening plan and heard concerns and questions. We surveyed teachers for their concerns and questions. We made classroom visits once our custodial team got all the class, the furniture back into the room, which was so impressive how they did that so quickly. Because then that gave us a visual and more questions and concerns arose so that we could better target their needs. And then today was our first internal reopening committee meeting and tomorrow will be our second. So very similarly, we do have more work to do and more solutions to find. But I'm happy to start sharing where we are. Along with the first topic of classrooms, I mentioned the spacing in the classrooms, similar to the high school, has been a concern. Even though with all the furniture in there now, it's, it's a little bit of anxiety provoking with all that extra furniture and spacing and barriers and such. So we were exploring how we can best move furniture around to support each classroom's needs. And I loved how Lou said the real estate is real estate and that's what it is right now. It's not really about our space. It's about the space that fits the needs of the teachers and the students. So we're definitely exploring those options. And again, thanks to the custodial staff for getting the furniture in there so quickly so that we can make these decisions. Another big topic though is absolutely is barriers. As you know, currently teachers now in our hybrid model, it's been up to their discretion if they'd like to use the barriers. Some have and some, some have been more relaxed about it. And right now the FMS barriers that we have are solids on the side and just clear in the, in the front. So that kind of gives an uneasy feeling. And similarly, we do have community members that shared that they were very supportive of barriers and others that, that thought that they were not necessary. So that does pose to opposing views that we're, we are trying to work through. We're, we're looking to purchase more barriers and have them stay on the desks in the classrooms. We want to label them not to touch. And that would really help with the concerns of students carrying barriers. So that's something that we are looking more into. And of course, they're, they're going to shift and moves. So we're exploring if we even can do that, do we Velcro them to the tables, use clay binder clips? So we're trying to problem solve those individual barriers on each desk and in the rooms. And then additionally, we have what we've been calling a shamrock tables for group settings. So Joe has been really supportive of trying to problem solve, how can we have students sit three or four at these circle shamrock tables with, with barriers when, when they won't fit there? So those are some of the, the concerns that we're exploring with barriers right now.
The next step was PPE, single mask is required in and around the Farragut Complex. High school, high school, all over the place. Some things that we were considering due to the meetings was verbally putting on the morning announcements to all faculty and staff that double masking is encouraged. It's not required. Similarly, that face shields, not as encouraged, it's an option, but it's definitely, it's not required. But single mask in and around the Farragut Complex, 100% required.
To ventilation, there are a lot of concerns and I feel Lou's concerned because it's not an area of my strong suit either. I didn't know what an HVAC system was until this year. But we do have a lot of questions about air exchange rates and windows openings and ACs on and ACs off. And, you know, should the windows be open from the top down or the bottom up? And a lot of concerns about also, you know, wildlife or even just bees with windows open with anybody with allergies and such. So ventilation is a concern and a lot of questions still around that. And I know Joe has been helping us answer them with Maureen. So thank you. Remote instruction is our, is our next topic. And the remote instruction is very similar in the sense that really everyone has agreed though that asynchronous is not something that we want to do or we don't want to revert back to that. And we have the tools and the technology. But one of the struggles is that not knowing how many students are in the classroom really does affect the teacher's lesson plans. So if, if we were able to get a more concrete number of the student population and it being less transient, then we would have a better understanding of how teachers make photocopies or group work and stuff. So we're, we're looking at finding ways and getting a commitment from families as Lou mentioned, so that we can better have a concrete way for our, our remote learners and how to utilize our classroom lessons for, for them. In addition, going back to the original reopening plan that came out in, was it early, late August, was with minimal interactions for remote learners. So we're looking at ways to do that. Or even the discussions were around if there were two remote students without adjusting any schedules, was there a way that they could be a part of the remote classroom? So this way, when the teacher has their 20 students in front of them, they can focus on, on their needs. In addition to having a time commitment for remote learners, that would be really helpful, not only for, as I mentioned, with planning lessons and such, but in addition to our, our state tests are coming and finding ways for giving testing environments and in a safe way and how many seats and such too. That would be a commitment that we're looking to hone down, whether it be two weeks or three weeks from our families. And looking to send out a survey for a commitment to them over the, the break before we, we open.
The next step was lunch. And so similar considerations to the high school is the, for indoor cafeteria, the seats are marked. We do have our current system in place where students sign in at their specific lunch tables is working. We're exploring if there is another protocol and other options for us to do this in the needs of contact tracing, if those do arise. We're also looking to try and maximize the outdoor seating areas even further. Like Melissa stated earlier, the high school is working closely as well with the facilities department of creating more spaces for students to enjoy their lunch outside. And other considerations are more recess spaces for outdoors as well as an inclement weather recess space with more students in the building and us unable to go outside during some days, we are looking into options there as well. Again, similar to the high school, the performances, a concern that came up and they're working through is the needed space for indoor practice areas as well as continued recordings for performances. So we're still going to continue to record those performances and put those out to the community because having everyone coming in right now is, although we're talking through it, something that's a solution may be difficult to come up with. As for extracurriculars, one of the big things that had come up with our meetings was access to students who are learning remotely still with their extracurriculars. So with our clubs right now, currently all our clubs are running virtually. And we want to make sure that when students are in the building, those who are still learning remotely still have access to those clubs. So some of the thoughts were trying to use, utilize those outdoor spaces if available, but still having the option for students to log on remotely so they can still access their extracurricular clubs. The next step was busing. Right now, FMS, we don't have many, many students right now on the bus. And so if needed, there is more than, there is social distancing room on the bus from FMS up to Hillside.
For ingress, excuse me, and egress, it's important to the community and to the staff through our meetings that they shared that we do have a reduced density for those entrances. Currently, the seventh and eighth grade do share an entrance right now. So we're exploring an alternative entrance exit, even maybe starting before April 12th so that little muscle memory for their entrances. So just splitting up the seventh and eighth grade entrance. In addition, hallway movement was a concern as well from the community and staff because of the high density and visiting lockers. So we have our signage for one-way hallways and staircases, but it was just more about the overcrowding of it. Thoughts were possibly staggering classroom dismissals. But concerns also, and we kind of explored that, were shared staff and shared grades. So if you're dismissing sixth grade a minute or two before the bell or after the bell, and they're going to their other sixth grade class, that next teacher may be with still the students if they're an eighth grade teacher, because our teachers share cross-grade levels and cross-building. So we're still exploring options on how we can help the hallway movement and locker visitations. And, and we also talked about hygiene and cleaning. We have in every classroom still hand sanitizers, classrooms that do have sinks, do have soap and paper towels there. So encouraging to use those hand sanitizers. There are stations all over outdoor cafeteria as well. So just kind of more promoting that as, as well and, and hand washing. And we also have the antimicrobial spraying that Joe Materano has talked about before, where when it gets on surfaces that it prevents anything from growing on it for about 90 days. So we'll be working with Joe and his team to maintain, enhance, and just continue their cleaning protocol at FMS.
Outdoor learning was another big topic of conversation in all the committee meetings. And as the high school stated before, we're working together to try to come up with a more structured approach for utilizing all the outdoor learning spaces in and around the Farragut Complex. But again, the consideration came up with Wi-Fi. And once leaving the building, the strength of the Wi-Fi to still be able to cast and to meet with those remote learners. So that was a big question and something that we're trying to work through with our committee meetings as well. Mask breaks, we already have teachers taking mask breaks when they're able to fit it into the pacing of their lesson. They take students right outside for the mask break, let the main office know. It's come to our attention in the committee meetings that giving priority to the younger students was something that we want to explore because that came up a few times in both the, in more than one of the meetings that we were a part of.
You have about four minutes.
Excuse me. So surveillance testing, we'll be having our meeting later this week with Joanne Cipollone to find out more. And Valerie mentioned a little bit more about that with the testing. It's a voluntary and we're just going to look at through logistics and how we can go about doing that, signing up and that protocol. Some more information to come regarding surveillance testing.
And again, with the health screener, it's, it's required, it's necessary, it's mandatory. And then you have just keep them with your cohort models, just in case we ever have to transition back to the hybrid model, something that we're going to keep consistent with high school as well. And that's under 15 minutes.
Sure is. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jennifer and Kevin. Now we'll transition to Amy Kases and John DeCamps.
Good evening, everyone. John and I are here to share with you a little bit about our plan at Hillside. We have been working with our team for the entire year to figure out how to get our children back in. And as you know, we were successful doing so for our kindergartners and our first graders. What we're trying to do is roll up that model. We've also spent some time where the children, where the staff have had the opportunity to respond to a survey to give us some feedback on, you know, an all-in model. We've had our reopening committees where our reopening team of mostly parents and some staff members joined us to come up with some questions and comments and possible solutions. We've met with our faculty to do the same protocol. We've also had meetings with our reentry team. Our reentry team is the team that has continually worked to recreate models for us. And it's been a collaborative process. And we've also been working with our leadership team. So it's been quite a, quite a process for all of us at Hillside. In regard to the classrooms, there are a number of things that we've been considering. And at Hillside, we have only completed our brainstorm. We have not gotten to the stage of planning yet. So what I'm sharing with you tonight is just some of the things that have come up that we need to think about, but no decisions have been made. In classrooms, the tables and desk configuration has come up as a concern. We worked very hard to make sure that our classrooms were collaborative. But now that they're collaborative, that is meaning that students are closer together. So we've looked at tables that traditionally hold six students. And we've tried to limit them to four students. But by doing so, we need to put additional desks into the classroom or use the other tables that are traditionally used for reading and small group work as student seating as well. We are continually looking at our classrooms to see how we can best fit our children in, remaining with some distancing between our children. So that's something that we will continue to look at. The special areas, another area of consideration. Right now, our special areas only push into kindergarten. They don't push into first grade consistently. However, we need to talk about whether or not our students will have the special area teachers push in or if our classes will go to the specials. Joe has shared with us, as Jen had mentioned, the 90-day microbial. And because of that, everything would have this kill COVID chemical, I guess you could say, or cleanser on the surface. And for that reason, we may be able to consider having students go to the special area classrooms. In regard to the classroom, we are also looking at the organization of the day. John has been an unbelievable help in creating multiple schedules this year. And the all-in schedule is different than the schedules that we've had. So we will be, once again, restructuring the day. That means looking at all of our related services, restructuring Restructuring where all the related services fall. Uh, and looking at the organization of the day as far as lunch and recess go. Um, some parents had shared the idea of splitting them up because of contractual obligations we can't. So we've got to just make sure that, um, we're able to give children good chunks of time of learning. And then also, um, breaks as needed. We are considering our ICT models of instruction. Currently, we have been very limited in our models. We've been using more of a parallel teach or a one teach, one observer, one assist. Um, but station teaching is our preferred method. So we're looking at ways that we can, uh, go back to that method of teaching. Uh, we are also looking at our spaces, much like Lou and Jen. We recognize the fact that our spaces are, uh, equipped for different ways. So what we want to do is make sure that all of our spaces are, uh, maximized. And we'll be looking at which classrooms need to go where. And then finally, we're looking at our materials and supplies, what things are shared or can be shared, uh, and how indoor recess will look. So that is the, um, considerations that we have around classroom. And John will share a little bit with you around barriers.
Thanks, Amy. Um, so, uh, we continue to have conversations around barriers. Um, one thing that, um, is a little bit different than the other two buildings, um, is that we have to consider, um, you know, the size and visibility for all of our students of the barriers. Um, and we have the individual barriers that are set up on, um, either individual desks or tables. Um, there are times, depending on where a child is sitting in a classroom, that, that this presents, um, some challenges, um, to see the instruction that's taking place. Um, in addition to that, uh, the different types of barriers that we do have, um, Joe and his team have been gracious enough to, um, work with the building continuously throughout the school year, um, to add, um, as many barriers as possible per classroom. But again, the, you know, the difference between an individual barrier or the one that goes across, um, a table that separates it into four. Um, we're taking, continuously taking a look at that as well. Um, and then finally, um, in addition to the barriers themselves, um, because our students, um, for the most part, in grades two through four. Um, have not been in full day movement in, within the classroom, um, continue to be a problem. And something that we have to consider moving forward into the, uh, all-in model, um, because the majority of the day, it seemed like. Um, you know, our children do not change teachers. They're in the same room for the entire day. So it's something that we have to consider.
In regard to PPE, our conversations are very similar to Lou and Jen's conversations. Uh, we've also talked about the masks. Um, it has been recommended by some of our parents. That, um, N95 masks are provided by the district so that there's consistency. There has been conversation around double masking, um, and even specifically double masking on the bus. Um, so these are conversations that we will have. Of course, we have the barriers, the face shields as another alternative. Uh, we talked about the idea of having some lessons for our children to be able to show them the proper way to wear a mask. And also signage for the mask wearing. And we've also talked about the idea of even having some, um, non-verbal signals for mask wearing. So if a little one has the mask fall below their nose, we can use a non-verbal to be able to remind them to move it up.
And then on to ventilation. Um, again, we continue to work with our buildings and grounds team. Um, they've done fantastic job as far as updating the ventilation in all of our classrooms throughout the building. Um, so questions that have come from the community and, and or our staff, um, is around, you know, doors being left open or closed, um, during instruction. Um, and then one thing, um, as far as windows being opened, um, some, uh, valid points have been brought up around, um, allergies. In the spring season, um, animals actually coming into some of our classrooms that are on the lower level. Um, and, um, a newly, um, presented problem to us within the last couple of weeks, um, that we've been working through, um, is the construction noise, um, that has been taken place because the, um, they, you know, the work has started. Um, and during the school day, there is some additional noise. Um, so leaving windows open does present a few more problems.
In regard to extracurricular, we have, um, our after-school programs which will continue. We, um, are looking into our instrumental program. Right now, our instruments are being taught virtually. However, we hope to be able to have them back in the building. So we'll be looking into what that will look like. And then we also have to look at our outdoor spaces. We have very limited outdoor space. We have our back playground and we have our front lawn. Uh, and our circle, which will have to close off, but we have a lot of activity going on. Our PE classes will be outside. Our music classes will often be outside. We have students that are, uh, also going to be taking breaks outside. We have recess, um, which is a staggered process, but, um, we're going to be having students in zones. So students will be co-horted during recess. So we have to really look at our outdoor space to make sure that everybody has the right spot to go. Um, luckily, we do have an outdoor classroom, which we're very lucky to have. And then that's been used mostly by our music, uh, program. So, uh, we'll be continuing to look at that. Lunch is an area of great concern, um, for many of our families. However, we're feeling pretty good about lunch. Simply because we've been very successful with kindergarten and first grade. Our students in kindergarten and first grade had eaten lunch in the classrooms, um, with their barriers up. The, there's cleaning in between the lunch period and them coming back for instruction. And we haven't seen a problem with this model. Um, there have been barriers in use and the students are, you know, distanced as well. Um, we did try to have our kindergartners outside at the beginning of the year, but there presented additional problems with the bees. And also with, um, allergies, being able to make sure that students were always completely independent and safe. So, um, that's something that we need to consider. We are also talking about the possibility of, um, seeing if there's an area where students could bring a blanket and maybe do a picnic even for one day a week. Um, you know, on each grade level, have one class go out each day, just so that there's a little bit of an alternative. Um, we're also looking at how we can supervise each class because each class will need their own monitor in order to be, uh, you know, supervised, whereas in the past, there have been fewer monitors in the cafe for all of the classes. So these are some of the things that we need to consider. Another recommendation was made by a parent in regard to having a quiet lunch where there'd be music on. So students were not necessarily engaging and talking, um, during the, uh, during the time that they were eating lunch, so that particles wouldn't be sprayed as much, even with the barrier up. We, um, we recognize that lunch is an area of concern for our families, but I want to reassure everybody that, um, we will be very, very methodical and careful in our plan for lunch.
As far as, um, performances, are there any type of, um, events towards the end of the school year? Um, in particular, there is one, big one, our fourth grade, um, graduation that our staff has already started thinking about. Um, alternative, um, ways to hold these events. Busing, um, busing is a big thing at Hillside. Um, one question that arose from our conversations. Is, um, the appropriate distancing on buses if more students are attending school. Um, making sure that our arrival and dismissal times are, are as crowded outdoors. Um, you know, thinking about possibly, um, staggering, um, our circle pickup and different type of dismissals each, each day. Um, it got brought up as far as, um, you know, going back to two bus runs or keeping it as, as one. Um, and then we've had some, you know, parents have offered feedback, um, and solutions to, um, help combat this. As far as creating kind of like a walking school bus and kind of like a walking carpool, um, that parents organize, um, outside of Hillside. Um, I know we had, uh, another, um, fourth grade parent brought, uh, brought the addition of, um, additional, um, bike racks outside the building. And then, um, also, you know, continuing what our current quarantine rules are as far as the bus. As Amy had mentioned before, um, you know, it's the, the row of and in front and in back of, you know, if there happens to be a case.
You have three minutes.
It brings us to remote learning. And remote learning is an area that is of great concern to us. We want to make sure that we can create, uh, a robust remote learning program for our little ones. Uh, currently in kindergarten and first grade, our remote learners are integrated. So they're on the screen and participating in the full day of learning with our kindergarten and first grade classrooms. And that is a possibility. Um, we are also talking with the students, uh, live streaming, which is what is in our remote learning plan. Um, the recommendation of a full-time remote teacher was brought up. So that's a consideration. Uh, the team has been very clear about their needing to be guidelines for when students can go remote. It's very difficult to go back and forth, uh, on, you know, moments noticed. Um, we're asking, we're hoping to ask families to commit to an all-in or a remote. So we have a better idea of how many families we're talking for each. And again, station teaching for ICT classrooms. Um, what would that look like? Would students carry around from station to station when they are in the remote? These are questions that we're looking at.
And since the start of school, uh, we're going to continue having separate entrances and exits for all of all students. And, uh, that's all based on the classroom location, um, within the building. Um, again, uh, the possibility of additional staffing, um, for arrival and dismissal. Um, we do have, uh, want to limit as possible, as much as possible transitions in congregation in our hallways. Um, and, you know, the arrival and dismissal times during the day, um, in our building, um, presents some, um, issues. And then as far as, um, we're going to continue to encourage, um, parents and students to, um, during dismissal to lead the grounds. Um, because we don't want, um, families congregating, um, after school.
Um, in regard to hygiene, we are going to continue to encourage the hygiene that we have, uh, currently in place. Hand washing and, um, using the hand sanitizer, making sure that students are, uh, you know, washing hands after bathroom use, making sure that their masks are, are on appropriately. Uh, and Joe has been a partner in all of the hygiene pieces that we need as far as the buildings and grounds team.
You have about a minute.
Uh, outdoor lear- learning, and I think, um, uh, Kevin and a few of the other administrators were touching on this before. Um, when out, outdoor, when learning is brought outdoors, technology, um, continues to be a concern of ours, um, specifically around the wifi. Um, what does the schedule look like for our outdoor learning spaces and how it coincides with, um, our lunch and recess periods? Making sure, um, there's enough space for every, all the events to be happening. Um, and then also for our remote students, um, what is happening, um, at home when, when the learning is happening outdoors?
Mask breaks, as we spoke about, um, we're looking at the schedule, scheduling of them. Uh, you know, we, we believe there may be the opportunity to leave it to teachers. As far as the frequency, possibly using the window for mask breaks for some students. And we've got to look for locations of where mask breaks can take place. What remote students do during mask breaks, uh, the type of mask we're, uh, considering, of course, uh, mask break rules. We're also looking at the proper wearing of mask. And again, we want to have clear directions for students. And, um, as I mentioned before, the non-verbal mask signal.
And finally, for testing, um, as mentioned before by Valerie and the other two buildings, we'll be meeting later this week to further discuss. And then as far as the health screener, really are there any other additional safety measures that we can put into place? Because we want to continue, um, having that protocol in place.
Thank you so much, Amy and John. Um, so at this point, um, I think it's best for the board now to, um, start, um, your own, um, inquiry into what you've heard. Uh, there are other people here, obviously Laura and Tessa, uh, Maureen and Joe and Melissa Samansky. And I think maybe Jeanette Coker, I could be wrong, but, uh, rather than having them do, uh, you know, sort of, um, their own presentation. I think it would be best if the board asked questions that, uh, that were specific and, and Drew, thank you Drew, uh, specific to, um, any area of, of, uh, concern. But other than that, I think that gives you a full hour, um, to engage in that inquiry. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Valerie. Um, and thank you, um, to each of the principals and assistant principals for providing that overview. Um, I, uh, encourage each of the trustees to, um, raise any concerns or make any suggestions about, um, what was shared.
Hi, thank you for the, your presentations. Um, I heard several of you mentioning that, um, recess and lunch during bad weather are a, a bit of a concern. Um, do you, do you think it is possible to find enough space for everyone to be inside at those times? If the majority of students are back, or would you consider going to hybrid on those days? Or how do you, i- is it a matter of just continue talking and finding the places? Or how, how do you see that playing out?
It's not an issue at Hillside, Allison, um, because we already currently are doing it for kindergarten and first grade. It would just be an indoor recess day.
Um, at the, at the middle school, it, it is a, a concern, um, because our fairgood gymnasium is used for our indoor cafeteria. Uh, so that space does occupy, uh, you know, that's a larger space that we would be able to use. Uh, in addition, we have our, um, band, seventh and eighth grade band class at, at that time, which is, um, uh, forty, forty-nine students. Um, and they want to go outside on great weather too, and for, for safety. Um, and, but when it's not, they're, they're in the, um, high school auditorium. And then just the, the added layer two is the indoor, um, middle school auditorium is, uh, currently being used for, uh, indoor, um, recess when the, we have the inclement weather. Um, it's just, it's not ideal. I am super sympathetic for our students on those days. Um, and plus, we, the, um, there's a timeline for how much even longer. The indoor auditorium will be available, uh, if construction, uh, starts, starts there. So, um, it's definitely something that, um, we're looking more into. We, we don't have a solution right now.
And also our physical education classes too, um, that take place during those lunch periods as well. So if it's inclement weather outside for PE classes, they're gonna come back inside and use, uh, the gyms. So in that case, um, we're missing out on another larger space that it could be taking place for an indoor recess. Um, the lunch eating spaces, though, like we said, we have, you know, three, we have the outdoor cafeteria that we have the tents up in case it is inclement. So if it's raining or drizzling, we're someone outside underneath those tents. The indoor cafeteria with the marked spaces, like we said earlier, as well as the fairgood gymnasium. So it's, uh, the recess part that we're, um, we're brainstorming, trying to find some more spaces, but.
From the high school perspective, we've got a couple of things that work in our favor in that, you know, eleventh and twelfth grade students leave campus, uh, for lunch. So that reduces our density to begin with. Uh, also, high schoolers don't care about bad weather. Um, so they'll, they'll go outside at, at any time and, whether it's snowing, raining. But we do have the Cochrane Gym. Since we all eat lunch together, fifth period, the entire high school. The entire Cochrane Gym is free and we've set up tables within the Cochrane Gym. So between the Cochrane Gym, the high school lobby, um, the outdoor classroom, the cafeteria. Um, I think we've got plenty of spaces for students to eat lunch.
Can I go ahead and just ask my other questions and then go on to the next trustee? Okay. Um, I don't know, I know that barriers have been an issue. It's, you know, feels restrictive for a lot of students. Having that, um, being sort of enclosed in your desk and all sides. I, I don't know if, if you've got your mask on and you have a, a face shield, if that is considered sort of like having a barrier. So you wouldn't need a, no, okay, Valerie's shaking her head. All right. And then, um,
You have social distancing or six feet of physical distancing or a barrier and the face shield is optional. It's only to protect the eyes.
Only the eyes. It doesn't count as a barrier. Okay. And then I remember at a recent presentation, um, I think Valerie mentioned that Hef had donated air purifiers. I don't know if that's part of the, if that's for every classroom or if that affects the ventilation or, I don't know.
Our, our goal, we are, we are, um, purchasing between the partnership with, it was actually PTSA, SEPTA and Hef. Who, who are partners in this and they've provided funds for about forty, uh, additional, um, air purifiers. We did have some, you know, from the beginning of the school year, and we've also been able to secure some additional ones. So to answer your question, the goal is that every, every classroom space that needs, um, to have a purifier will have one. And I think with the partnership, um, with the PTSA, I think they're, they're, um, assisting us in, in ensuring that every classroom does have one. And any other spaces, there may be a classroom that may not need it depending upon how many students, but I think that's our goal.
And how, how do we find out what the proper air turnover rate is for?
Well, we know what it is, right? Because we did the ventilation report in the beginning of the year. So in, even prior to opening, we did have that analysis done. And of course, and you know, any, um, the higher the number, right? Uh, you know, and that's where the, what we're finding is that anything that we've learned that, um, increases, um, that air exchange number. Um, is, is, I think, you know, some people would suggest that five or six is kind of the optimal. Although I think for schools, it's around, um, I think it's like in the two and a half to three range per hour, their exchange. Ours is at above three. And then again, anything you add to that, like a open window, that, that kind of, each one of those, um, adds to the, the, um, that number of air exchanges. So in, in learning that the air purifiers would add, from my understanding, another air exchange that you could count in. So that would put us up. And that's why I think we did have them in the beginning of the year for some folks that either had ADA requirement, you know, different reasons. We added them to some different spaces, but, um, that, that, that's when we started to move in that direction to add those to all the instructional spaces. As yet another mitigation factor or another strategy to increase those air exchanges.
Thank you.
Just, just to, it's quickly interrupt to the benefit of anyone who is, uh, participating in this call. Or, um, listening to this recording in the future.
Just, just to quickly interrupt to the benefit of anyone who is participating in this call or listening to this recording in the future. If maybe, if Joe could just remind everyone of the engineer's report that occurred. So that, I know you just alluded to it, Maureen, but to just give a quick summary, if you wouldn't mind, Joe, of what, what they reviewed. And what briefly was upgraded to, to make our air exchange in, in both Hillside and the Baragat complex up to par for our reopening.
Sure. They went through, we had some architects and they had the engineers within their firm who came out and looked at every, every part of our building for ventilation. Proper ventilation in classrooms and in larger areas. And they, they studied everything, they, they looked at everything, they sized up all the motors and vents and fans. And, and they found that there were some deficiencies here and there. And, and they gave us remediation, you know, things to do. And, and we did those things. There were some, they're called ERVs, which is air recovery systems. Or energy recovery ventilation systems, which we had to add to some areas. And what those did was bring fresh air in and took fresh air, took air in the room out. So they did both venting and supplying fresh air. And in other areas, we just really needed some more ventilation. So we added fans in, in the tops of windows and in walls of the school and stuff like that. So everything they suggested that we do to bring everything to code, we did. And that was it.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
And, and just, I just want to, the other piece with Joe was mentioning about adding, we also have air exchange. Our, our heating system does work to pull, we already had that currently. So anywhere that they felt it wasn't working or needing an upgrader, where we could put in a higher level of filter. We did also in, in some of those larger areas. So we also looked to improve, you know, not only address any deficiencies, but also to improve where we could.
Maureen and Joe, would, is there any information about window fans that you needed to, that you wanted to speak to?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'll start and then Joe can kind of jump in. So again, similar to what we spoke about with the air purifiers, where we are always looking at new information that may be available. And we had also read as other people about some of the, the window fans. And, and we did reach out to, Joe had spoken to an HVAC person, he'll speak to that. But, and kind of share why, right at this present moment, we don't think that is a good solution for us. So Joe, do you want to jump on and just kind of, just, you know, share what you've learned about the box fans?
Sure. So the rooms, rooms are always designed, they're engineered to take in air and to, to take in air and exhaust air equally. We are opening windows to enhance that and bring in more air. But he, an analogy he gave me is like, you, you take a full glass of water and you keep putting water in it. It's just going to spill over. Like it just goes into the room. You can only take out a balanced amount of, you take in an amount and you take out an amount. So it's a balanced amount. If you continue to bring in air, it's really not doing anything extra for that. The other thing I was concerned about is not only the cost, but we don't have electric at every window. We'd have to keep the windows open at night, which is a safety and security issue. You know, let alone maybe kids sticking pencils in fans. And to me, it just seems like a nightmare to have it. Yeah, of course, if it was enhancing anything, if it made it better, I would absolutely be for it. But there's a lot of people who think that it's just, it doesn't make sense to do it.
And what we also found, although it is a, is something where it's, it's a recommendation where it would, in certain cases, absolutely help. But I think as we mentioned, the, we do already as a school and in our particular building, because we upgraded that. Where the last few bonds, even at Hillside, we had done some work on them. You know, we currently have something that pulls, you know, pulls out exhaust and increases fresh air. So, you know, the, the fan would be, I guess, in a space that if, if that wasn't existing also, I would imagine that that was also just a recommendation. But in looking at our design or setup, and we, we don't think it would be, as Joe stated, for other reasons, wouldn't be a benefit. Add a benefit towards, and we, we do have some concern. So.
Yeah, that is true. We do have, that's, univentilators do take fresh air in. And also, most of the rooms in, in these schools have an air conditioner, which has a fresh air intake also. So you do have that option to add a little bit of fresh air into the room. But just adding a fan in the room doesn't really seem to enhance too much.
Right. And, and unlike, you know, thankfully, our board, the last few years has made it a priority to ensure that all air conditions were outfitted with. Excuse me, all classrooms have an air conditioning unit, and that's not the case in all the schools. So as we read some of these reports, they're also adding to a place which would not have an air conditioner unit already there to help pull in fresh air.
Thank you, Joan, Maureen. I see, Jody, you had wanted to make a comment or question?
Yeah, first, I'd just like to thank everybody for all the work that you're doing to put this all together. I know it's just one more thing and a big thing to have to do. Lou, you brought this up, and I think others too. I just wanted to be clear about if we know yet what the, I'm assuming there will be a plan. Or with the plan, that we will have a plan for parents who are not comfortable sending their kids back to school. That will be okay, right?
Absolutely, Jody. We will have a plan. The, the choice is going to be either remote or in school. The only thing that we're asking parents, that we're, we're going to try to ask parents, is if they can give us a set amount of time. Because managing daily remote versus daily in the building is, is really become problematic for all. And contact tracing becomes an issue. So, but yes, we will have a plan. And quite frankly, knowing, and I can probably speak for the, all three buildings, knowing our teachers. They will, they will, they will deliver.
Oh, I have no question that they'll deliver. And I like the idea of having people commit to certain blocks of time. Otherwise, forget it. Thank you.
I just had a question. Thanks again, everyone, for all this. I was on the Hillside call. A lot of thanks to the administrators, thanks to the parents, thanks to the community members who've been engaged. With going through a lot of detailed considerations. On the, on the construction side of Hillside, it seems like there's going to be this confluence of warmer weather, opening the windows, construction. More kids coming in, construction starting. What, what are the mitigation thoughts around? I can imagine, you know, some sort of loud equipment in the background could really be prohibitive to learning. Have we been talking to the construction, the crews to try to figure out coordinating schedules? Or what are the specific mitigation strategies around that?
So, so I'll start and then Joe can jump in. I, I, when the comment was raised earlier, right? The, the last few weeks in particular, the, the work that's being done at Hillside is quite noisy. That work is going to be finished within a week, maybe a little bit less, maybe a day or two more. So in, in that's the rock removal that's happening currently. So really, that's the loudest part of the work. I mean, everything else, when they're, it's a much different noise level than what, what will exist after that. So unfortunately, like, we kind of knew, like, there was going to be a certain amount of weeks of that. That being said, the good news is it will be finished well before all students are back in. And we have talked about with them in terms of some mitigation strategies. In particular, where obviously we're, we're thinking about dust or soil that can be airborne, right? When you're doing some construction and they, they are going to be putting in a protocol about what they, they actually just use water to kind of so that. As they're moving things, that it's not coming into the air, thinking about children being outside more at, at different parts. And wanting to ensure that they're not impacted. And in terms of the way they're working, they'll be, as they have been, they, either they start out and work in or start in and work out. So, you know, depending upon, we'll be coordinating, we have a construction manager who's been wonderful, completely understands. And, and is going to be working hand in hand with the leadership at Hillside. To kind of try to structure or schedule the work, so it'll be, you know, less, less impactful to them. And, and those are kind of things I can share. Joe, do you have anything else to share on that front, on the construction schedule?
No, not unless there's specific questions. I think you answered the question.
You know, my only concern is, you know, those are a lot of people in and out of those environments. And, you know, just, you gotta really keep, keep your eye on, there's so many things that no one's maybe got a bad intention. But, you know, as you said, they don't use the water one day, or, you know, it's really dusty, kids are outside. If we could just really be proactive, flagging things that we see that, that, that they're doing. I think that'd be helpful, because it's just, there's just, I don't think any of us could imagine this many moving parts at once. So just knowing when there's a lot of moving parts, stuff just happens, just, just as it is. So if we could all just keep our eyes, you know, Amy and John and the staff, just keep your eyes open up there. I think we're just going to need all of our eyes open in, in that tough environment.
Yeah. And there is, I mean, just again, there is also, and we'll make sure that we're always communicating. We do have a full-time construction manager that he is like physically up there managing that. So. Physically there every day, he actually stays in a trailer on the property. And actually, the, the, the GC has a supervisor too. So it's Rob Pellegrino, who's our construction manager, who's on site every day, of course, you know, Joe and some of his staff. And then we have Christian, who is the project manager for our general contractor, who then oversees all the subs. And they're physically on a trailer on Hillside.
Okay. Doug, I'm in communication with the construction manager at least four or five times a day.
Me too. Like at least I speak to him like three times a day as well.
Yeah, if you could, and it sounds like you're already doing it, but just, just so I could say it, get it out of my head. If we could just really have that proactive conversation with them, I, I'm sure they're on top of it. You know, I just really appreciate it, letting them know that we got to really watch this pretty closely.
And just so you know, there is times of the day that they're not allowed to leave the site. You know, we've, we've made that, you know, we've given them times a day that they cannot go in and out of the site. So they know that and they're fenced in. So we're pretty confident it's going to go smooth.
Okay, great. Thanks, guys.
I know that Valerie, the state said that you're also collecting, you should, are collecting the, the names of teachers who have been vaccinated and our percentage, it sounds pretty high right now. I'm just wondering how teachers are, are faring and administrators, you know, if most have been able to get their vaccination appointments? And if that's giving people a better level of comfort, or how, how is the staff feeling?
So the, the directive from the state has, you know, sort of, you know, shifted, you know, over the last two weeks. So the, the executive order from the governor, which is two oh two point nine five and two oh two point nine six. Direct the Westchester County Department of Health to collect the information with regards to how many teachers have been vaccinated thus far? And how many staff have been vaccinated thus far? And we collect that by school. So we just instituted that today as a result of having a conversation with, the superintendent is having a conversation with the Westchester County Department of Health, so that, that those two executive orders were in place. So previous to today, we'd already thought we were complying with those orders. So the data that we collected as a result of those who actually, the faculty and staff and teachers who completed the survey. Eighty-two percent responded that they had been vaccinated thus far. So that's the extent of it. We don't collect names, we don't collect emails. You know, our, our sort of, you know, responsibility is very limited. And, you know, we are not, you know, sending teachers emails, you know, you know, telling them to, to obtain a vaccination. What we have done is to make sure that we have a faculty member here that's dedicated, a clerical team member who's dedicated to assisting any faculty or staff member to obtain a vaccination appointment and has been very successful. We also, early on, pardon me, made available through a, a side letter, a memorandum of agreement with our bargaining units. To allow them to use a sick days to obtain their vaccine, their vaccinations. And effective on Friday, the governor signed legislation that now allows any faculty or staff member in any of the schools to use paid, to obtain paid leave. So for four hours to obtain their vaccination, both vaccination injections. Two separate four-hour timeframes. So we are collecting that information. Melissa Dela Barrera will be going in and changing, you know, any codes where, you know, people might have already used a, a sick day for this. So they're not, faculty and staff are not going to be penalized for, you know, using a, a sick day, which is, you know, which was the original agreement. So we will rescind the three MOAs that have been signed by the board, which had, but prior to March 12th. We were using to make sure that we supported the, you know, an expedited method for, for faculty and staff to obtain their vaccinations. This is a weekly survey that we have to administer. And, and I am responsible for sharing that information with the Westchester County Department of Health. Again, we, we do not collect names, we do not collect email addresses. We are simply administering the survey. Every school district is doing this. Every superintendent was on the call this morning in the Westchester area to make sure that we're all on the same page about what we are expected to do. So that's where we are. Eighty-two percent of, of the faculty or staff who answered the survey indicated that they had obtained a vaccine thus far.
And do we know how many returned the survey? I mean, you just said of those who answered it, but was it a fairly good percentage of people who replied or?
Well, they're still replying. So this is, the new survey was sent out today. So we know we have a hundred and eighty-four teachers and ninety-four others who are not teachers. So that's two hundred and seventy-eight faculty and staff members, the staff members in the district. So of those who did respond to the survey, those individuals indicated that they had in fact obtained their vaccination. So, and again, you know, we're, we're, we are not, we don't, we can't overstep our sort of, you know, realm of responsibility by, you know, harassing anyone. If we can't do that, we can't, I can only ask what I'm, the, the health department has asked me to ask. I can't, you know, you know, send emails to those who I think didn't, although I don't have that information. So I can't send an email to anyone, because we have not collected email addresses, we have not collected names. Because again, we're following, you know, the, the executive order and being respectful of faculty and staff. So that right now, we have no, there's nothing that we have in our ability that has been directed by the governor's office or the Westchester County Department of Health that indicates that we should do more.
Right, right. No, I was just trying to get a sense of numbers, but yeah, thank you.
So is what you're saying, Valerie, I'm just trying to understand, is it accurate to say that the state doesn't require teachers or staff to disclose their vaccination status to the district? Would that be?
I can ask, so the, the, the executive order indicates that we can ask teachers to inform us whether they've been vaccinated thus far. We can ask faculty or staff who are non-teachers that same question. But we are not sending names of people, the, the Westchester County Department of Health is only asking for the school. They're asking for the information by school. So I have to submit the number of faculty, number of teachers in our school district. By school, the number of staff by school. And the, the name of the school and the numbers of teachers who've been vaccinated thus far. That's exactly the wording. And then the number of faculty, I'm sorry, staff who've been vaccinated thus far. And that's a, a weekly survey.
And I guess my question is that, that means that it's at the discretion of the employee, whether or not they choose to participate in the survey?
Right, we can't.
That's what I wanted to.
Complete the survey. We are asking, as per the governor's executive order, as I said, when we send out the information. They know that we're not collecting email addresses, we're not collecting names. We're just complying with the order and hoping that we'll get, you know, people feel, you know, who do not feel that they shouldn't be sharing this with us. But again, there, we, we can't compel people, because we, you know, we're not collecting names and email addresses for that purpose.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification.
One aspect of reopening that was present in the summer committee, but not in the current discussion was on the social and emotional aspects of learning amidst the pandemic. And I don't want that aspect of the experience to go unspoken about. And I hope that our administrators and teachers and counseling and support staff remain steadfast in their outreach to help students through this time that's been very difficult for a lot of families. Families have lost loved ones, they've lost financial security and they've lost the routine that impacts their learning. Children have been managing feelings of isolation and grieving for either people they knew or grieving for the lives that they previously led or both. And while I I do remain really hopeful and it's great to hear the the amount of attention that's going to the logistic plans. I I want us all to tread lightly on one another and onto the students and to really be thoughtful and react thoughtfully when we notice changes in students' academic engagement or performance or their behavior in school as we reopen. And I'm hoping you can speak a little bit about some of the approaches that might be in place or conversations that you're having at the building level in regard to how this will impact students as they reenter.
Melissa Semansky, do you want to kick off with some of the overview information that you shared at a recent P T S A and SEPTA chat? There was some some over some information you had obtained from Jeanette Coker.
Sure, I will find and pull that I just wanted to begin by saying we do have a plan in place where we have our M T S S, our multi tiered system of supports, and that's really the umbrella for both academics and social emotional. So so, you know, our students are are on the radar in a variety of different ways, but that is definitely one of them. And so our building level teams meet regularly to make sure that we are reviewing any potentially vulnerable students and putting some supports and interventions into place if that's necessary. I can speak personally in the sense that I have regular meetings with each of the building leadership teams. And we review students for whom we have some potential concerns. And we keep an eye on them and we talk through some of the interventions that are in place. And and that is, you know, in terms of a cycle, we're revisiting that to see if there are some additional things that are necessary. As for what you were just referring to, Valerie, I will take a look for that now. I'd also like to defer to our building leaders. I know there are a lot of things in place that are part of the general curriculum. And in terms of the way that counselors are working with students at each of the buildings, a little bit different at the elementary school based on the program. But I do want to defer to the leadership teams as well.
I can jump in for Hillside. So in Hillside, as you know, we're doing second step. And all of our classes are continuing to have a second step lessons weekly, which focus around all the different pillars kindness and respect and courage and resilience and all the pieces that we continue to teach our children. In addition, our school counselor Julian Snyder and our school psychologist Gina Porcini now and Alyssa Bloom are working collaboratively on a a presentation for our students to be able to help them reenter. As you know, kindergarten and first grade are already all in. So our youngest learners have already been adapted to the model. It's our second, third and fourth graders that we need a little bit of support. Though our data shows that our students are actually doing quite well. And Julian has been keeping a very close eye on all of our students. As I'm also shared, we also have a robust M T S S program. So any student that's been showing any signs of distress, anxiety, anything like that, have been picked up through our tier two or tier three intervention. Tier three is at the top of the pyramid. And generally, five percent of the population, and right now we only have one percent of our population that is accessing tier three. So our students are very well supported and that's a result of the excellent job that our teachers are doing.
Sure, thanks. To add on to just for F M S, one of the the great features that we have this year is our team meeting structures where they do meet daily, if not three, four times a week. And we've designated certain goals for each of those weekly or excuse me, daily meetings. And one of them is student conversations. And our school counselors are participate in the those meetings when they are talking about students. And a lot of the concerns that the teachers see in the classroom daily, they they see the students every day and are building relationships with them, following ruler and the mood meter check ins. Those conversations can also be relayed back to the counselors. And then we have our M T S S and our S S team meetings weekly, we we discuss those and try to implement interventions to support students. So that's a great structure that we have going on this year. Other initiatives, for example, thank you to the P T S A, they just funded a grant for Ms Perez for journaling and these beautiful My Journal books that have so looking on building a positive mindset and building upper stamina and reflection on these beautiful journals. So that was a great add on kind of last minute, frankly, for support from the P T S A to be able to help build those cultures and the mindset for our youngest learners here in Farragut.
I'll speak a little bit about the high school. I can tell you that, you know, what Amy described is M T S S. We do also here at the high school, but we, in addition to that, we meet weekly. We meet every Tuesday morning just to talk about our students. And some are from concerns from our teachers, some are from our kinds counselors, some of us from the administrators. And sometimes our students just sort of tell us, I need a little bit of help. So we discuss that every Tuesday morning and we put interventions in place in a timely way. I can tell you that our health classes continuously talk to our students about social emotional skills. I can also tell you that I think there's going to be a level of reprogramming for many of our students who have been out of school for so so many months. And that's a tough word, reprogramming. But, you know, I've been in classes where I've seen our students texting each other for answers. And I've seen our students kind of interacting or shutting off their cameras, something they can't do when they're in a a live setting. So, you know, do we worry about this? Yes, we do, but our teachers are, I can say they're in a compassionate phrase. We've talked about grading as far as being compassionate, but I think we're also talking about how we are when we're live in front of our students. We've had a, I can tell you, we had a conversation at our last faculty meeting about what what the expectation from the adults should be and how regardless of your feelings and whether we should be in or not, that we are seen as as the adults. So we are seen as the people who are who should be the most confident. So we need to have our game faces on. And, you know, that that comes in unity. It can't where whereas as, you know, weak as the first person that says they're afraid to be in the building. And I can tell you that, you know, the faculties are are mixed. I would say we have forty percent of our faculty, and I'm speaking for high school, about forty percent of our faculty who say let's open up tomorrow. I think we have about forty percent of our faculty who who, while I'm not so sure about opening, will jump on board, no problem, let's open up. And then we have about twenty percent of our faculty who's who's really scared and have a a level of anxiety that is 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 real. And and they have their real reasons for having that anxiety and I think we need to respect that. However, we as a faculty need to stay united when we are in front of our students. And we need to set the example because our kids smell fear and 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 that can't happen. So we need to be united in that. We we will watch every student as we have. Melissa and I have made phone calls to students' homes since March of last year as when we think someone is struggling or just to give someone a little bit of a pep up pep up pep talk. And we'll continue to do that.
And I can just add, checking back into the notes here, that our counselors have been meeting with students individually and they can self refer, parent can call, speak to the counseling team about concerns. And then there are things that are happening just through push in specifically at the middle in the high school, working with students by pushing into some of the classes like health and English, offering support and emotional regulation, dealing with anxiety, a wellness classroom page. So there are a number of things that are going on to make sure that we're keeping social emotional concerns and learning at the forefront.
Thank you for all those responses. Are there any other thoughts or questions from board trustees? Well, I I look forward to seeing the recorded announcements from each of the building levels that will be released next week. I'm sorry, not next week on the twenty fifth. And it it appears that the community should be anticipating further surveys that will go out during the the spring recess. So those are two components that the community has to look forward to. And if after the call of trustees are reviewing the notes or if any who are listening to this meeting have questions, they can reach out to the building level or to buildings and grounds if there are anything specific to that or or to Dr. Henning Piedmont regarding reopening. And I want to really thank all of you, those who presented, and then also to Mr. Wendell and Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Stewart, who are here to participate along with the building principals and assistant principals. And thank you, Melissa and Maureen and Valerie, for bringing us all together. And I really, I believe, you know, it's it's hard to believe that just a year ago, things were really shutting down. Today, I think, was the first day of full remote instruction in the calendar for twenty twenty for the district. So it's really remarkable that our steadfast work as a community, the steadfast work of science has has brought us all here. And thank you all for remaining so focused on the needs of the students of the district.
And I'd like to thank the board for being so supportive of all of us in all the moving parts and all of our Joe, Maureen, and the all the custodians and buildings and grounds team have been so dedicated to getting all the furniture, they move furniture back countless times. It's just, it's, you know, they touched furniture, you know, dozens and dozens of time and have been so flexible in trying to make sure everything works. So they deserve a special, you know, commendation and recognition for everything that they've been doing, you know, since the very beginning when we know when when things had to shift and move around. And they've been so patient and worked so closely and collaboratively with the building administrative team. And and that's been so so important because this is the only way we've managed to do this work, you know, that we all have worked together. You know, have things been perfect? No, but, you know, is there, you know, a lack of dedication and commitment to ensuring that we, you know, do everything safely? And with to, you know, with, you know, a student centered focus, you know, absolutely. Lauren Tasker had been engaged from the outset since our students have been here. Our students with I E Ps, you know, and our students, our English language learners have been in school full time from the beginning. Not every school district opened that way. So they've been, that was the goal from the outset and they continued to uphold that and work very closely, you know, with the schools with the administrative team, not every, you know, there've been some challenges and, you know, we, you know, we continue to work through those. And, you know, I want to thank everyone for their commitment, you know, to, you know, getting us to this point where, you know, April twelfth is going to be the sort of a new beginning for us in terms of an opportunity to have all children back in school. And of course, to provide remote instruction for those who whose parents still want them, you know, for a variety of reasons to learn from home. But what's really, really critical that, you know, we've been emphasizing is that what happens in April, these last two weeks will really be a prediction for how we reopen in September. So everything that we're doing is to make sure that we set, so there's, you know, sort of basically two priorities to reopen on April twelfth, but also to be prepared on the basis of the last ten weeks to open, you know, really successfully in September. So everything that we'll be doing will be with those sort of twin goals in mind and paying attention to everything that we learn from all of our families and faculty and staff with regard to the recommendations, the concerns and the the solutions. Drew Wendell, from the very beginning, has been committed to making sure that in with all of the regulations, he, you know, he kisses three rings. Section one, the Westchester County Department of Health and the New York State Athletic Association to try to make sure that everything that's done is done safely. And of course, I want to congratulate Drew and Patrick Theodore for the girls varsity semifinalist rank plus, you know, all the successes that that have come just just to function and to operate. And, you know, I tell, we were just talking today about how wonderful it's been to have him on board to do what he's doing because he really understands, you know, the athletic, you know, arena. And he works really hard to make sure that children have an opportunity and a chance, you know, and although some of them are probably pretty tired because they've had multiple practices with multiple athletic teams, right, Drew?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we had a week overlap. So don't forget Chris Roll, he did a great job as his as the assistant as well.
As assistant coach.
And all the teams did really well this year. So I'm proud of them all.
Thank you. And thank you again to the board trustees for all the work that you're doing to to ensure that all of this happens in a way where it's done safely and done with the students at the center. And obviously, everyone, Maureen, Melissa, Joe, all of our administrators, thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Bye bye.